Good afternoon, everyone. We are ready to start on the Land Use Committee. And before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to Matthew Peters, who's going to give us a brief presentation. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everyone, this is just a brief presentation on some best practices and controls for WebEx. So hopefully, the hearing will run smoothly. First is just some of the controls that everyone will see. We have the mute button on the far left. Please keep yourself muted when you're not speaking to avoid feedback and a lot of extra noise in the system. You also have control for your video. When you're speaking, please turn your video on. We have controls for sharing screen. I think we have one person from Parks who will be doing a presentation. So you'll use that button to start the screen sharing. The participants button can be used to see who is in the WebEx meeting. Then you can use the chat function if you need to send a text message to participants or an individual. You also have the more options button here, which I'll talk about more on the next slide. So if you click more options, you'll have the option to raise your hand. For members of the public who are joined by computer, we ask that you use this to let the committee know if you have a question or if you'd like to testify. On the top right of your screen, you'll have the screen view options. You have a few different choices shown here. And just some best practices for WebEx hearings. Try to find a quiet space with good light and a strong internet connection so you can be seen and heard clearly. Again, turn on your video when you are speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. Be present. Don't try to multitask. Be patient. And also, wear headphones with a microphone to cut down on background noise if possible. For public testimony for computer users, the committee staff will coordinate the testimony. And we ask that attendees use the raise hand function to indicate that they wish to testify. And you can raise your hand at any time, but won't be recognized until the testimony portion.
Well, she hasn't called me back. Have you talked to her?
No, I haven't. But I've talked to...
Somebody's not unmuted. Somebody's unmuted.
I haven't. I've been too busy. I'm getting ready to start this hearing. But I...
And then last, each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. Public testimony for phone attendees works a little bit differently because we cannot see your name and there's no raise hand function. So we will go one by one and unmute callers to give them the opportunity to testify. You'll hear two beeps when you're unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. If you do wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if we're not able to understand what you are saying, we'll ask you to call back in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Matt, you would have called Wolf.
Yes. Committee members, I'll call your name. Please indicate that you're present for the record. Councilman Reisinger?
Here.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman?
Here.
Councilwoman Costello?
Present.
Councilwoman Dorsey?
Here.
Councilman Pinkett? I see your name. Are you able to hear us? For the record, Councilman Pinkett is logged in. Councilman Middleton?
Present.
And Councilman Stokes?
I'm here.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair, it looks like everyone is present.
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, everyone. We are here for City Council Bill 19-0474. This is the rezoning of 3925 Gulf Street. The purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3925 Gulf Street, block 6311, lot 031, is outlined in blue on the accompanying plaque. And we're changing the zoning from an I-1 zoning district to the IMU-2 zoning district. And the public notice requirements have been met. And at this time, if she's on WebEx, I recognize Councilwoman McGray, who's the sponsor of the bill. Councilwoman, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. As the chair stated, this bill is for the purpose of changing the zoning at 3924 Gulf Street from an I-1 to IMU-2. Both the Hollentown Community Association and Southeast CDC has submitted letters of support. And I do ask the committee for favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, we're going to go to agency reports. Planning Commission?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Staff?
This is Matt DeSantis with the Planning Department. Planning stands by its report. The Planning Commission voted favorably for the bill. And the one thing that I do want to note is that there was, I believe, there was some conversation from the commission that they, in addition to being supportive of this rezoning, they expressed some interests in a broader, that the planning staff working with the community take a broader relook at the zoning in the area and staff. We agree with that. So we were supportive of this particular rezoning and think that there is possible rezoning actions in the area which could help, you know, better respond to current conditions and help lead to positive laws.
Okay. So that was basically a comment and a recommendation, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Planning? Since there's no questions for Planning, BMCA? BMCA?
This is Matt Stegman from Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I did speak to Derek earlier, Derek von Gardner. BMZA does stand by the report, has no objections.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Matt Stegman again, pinch hitting for Liam Davis from DOT. Again, DOT stands by their report and has no objections to the bills.
Thank you, Matt. Law Department?
Good afternoon, Elena DePietro from the Law Department.
Good afternoon.
The only comment that the Law Department had on this bill was that we didn't feel like the Planning Commission report had actual facts to support the standards. So I don't know if Matt wants to elaborate on that. But if there's more, if there's testimony today that provides those facts, then the Law Department could approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, so Elena, if the representative of the developer, Carolyn Hecker, sure, she's got written.
Any testimony from her could supply the necessary facts.
Okay, so you're saying the testimony, the written testimony, we can't...
You need additional testimony other than what's in the bill reports.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Law Department? No? Okay, HCD?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Okay, thank you. BDC?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Luis Cardona with the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our agency report, supporting this bill.
Thank you. Parking Authority?
Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. So that deals with the agency reports. Matt, do we have any reports from the public?
Mr. Chair, we have Caroline Hecker, Representative for the applicant, has her hand raised. I can unmute her now.
Yeah, please.
Caroline, go ahead.
Hello, good afternoon, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I don't seem to have a button to indicate if my video is on, so I'm not sure if you can see me.
No.
My law partner, Justin Williams, submitted a supplemental memo to the committee, which Mr. DePietro may not have seen. It adds some additional facts to supplement the Planning Commission's report. And I can discuss a few of those right now, just to add some color to what's going on here.
Please.
The property itself has had industrial zoning for a long time. It's improved with a building that had an industrial use, but it's been vacant for a long time. Clearly, the building is no longer suited for an industrial use. It's outdated. It's also a very small site, as a practical matter, to put an industrial use on. And it's located adjacent to residential properties, which would create significant impacts if a real heavy industrial user were to go in there. It also doesn't have very good truck access for industrial users, and it has no parking on-site, which would be an impediment to any type of industrial use. The community has expressed support, as Councilwoman McGray noted, to change the zoning to the IMU-2 district, which will allow a buffer between the industrial users that are a little further afield and the residential community, and will allow the building to be utilized, existing buildings to be utilized, for some types of commercial uses that are more appropriately suited to the proximity to residential. I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has. I thank Councilwoman McGray for her support. And you should have the memo from Mr. Williams in the file.
Do we have any, do we have any questions for the committee? No? Okay. Clarification, law department, does that mean finding of facts as far as you're concerned?
It's not my decision to determine whether the facts are sufficient. That's your decision. I would say you have to find that there's a change in circumstances since the last company zoning within the property.
Okay. Okay, it's up to us. Okay, thank you. Any of my colleagues have any questions? So we need to have a motion to move the finding. Is there any more people for the public?
Mr. Chair, we have several callers that we have to go through. We have several callers who have joined.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Go through that.
Go ahead.
As I discussed earlier, callers will go one by one to give you the chance to testify. And when you're unmuted, you'll hear two beeps, and so you can begin your testimony or let us know that you are not interested in testifying. First caller? No response. Second caller should have just heard two beeps. No response. Third caller? A response. Fourth caller? No response. And the fifth and final caller? No response. Mr. Chair, I think that is it for public testimony.
Okay, thanks, Matt. That settles the testimony from the public. At this time, I need a motion to move the finding of facts. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move the finding of facts, Middleton?
Middleton moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's second?
Costello.
Costello? All those who move the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts is passed. There's no amendments to this bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorable?
Motion to move the bill favorable.
By Middleton? Who's second?
Second, by Stokes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. Reisinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello? Costello?
Costello is yes.
Costello is yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Stokes is yes. We have eight in the affirmative. The bill passes. It will be, the report will come out on second reader on July the 6th. That concludes City Council Bill 19-0474. Now, we are ready to go on to City Council Bill 20-0487. This is a zoning conditional use, amending ordinance 18-170, as enacted by ordinance 14-06, it's 206, and amended by 1616, and last amended by ordinance 18-170. Reauthorize and continue the permission for the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot for the parking of four or more automobile on the property known as 4001 Roland Avenue, providing for the automatic termination of this ordinance and providing for a special effective date. Public notice requirements have been met. And at this time, this bill was introduced by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Clark? You want to speak on the bill?
I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. I hope that you will support this bill. Roland Park Place is actually the only continuing care community in Baltimore City. It goes from apartment living all the way through the stages of life and death. And basically, it's in the 700 block of West 40th, across the street from the Rotunda Shopping Center. For years now, Roland Park Place, the core facility, has been being, has been in the process of construction to add apartment units and to reconfigure some of the interior spaces for community living and activities. During this period is when we began this temporary parking lot ordinance, because the Roland Park Place owns the property next door. It has a small church on the property that has been abandoned for a long time. But the temporary parking is behind that church, and it's used to pick up the extra parking that comes from having construction workers on-site almost all the time. They are asking for what will be the last extension of the temporary parking lot permit because they, with this construction, by the termination date we're asking for, which is April 19th, 2022. So I would ask you to please help us so that we can avoid having the same parking getting into a neighborhood that's already overparked surrounding this facility. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, we will start with the agency reports. Planning Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is Matt DeSantis with the Baltimore City Department of Planning. The Planning Commission considered this bill February 20th and recommends amendment and approval with the following two amendments, as noted in the agency report, that a revised landscape and screening plan approved by Planning is attached to the legislation and a small technical amendment, as noted in their report, be made. I've been answering questions.
Thank you. Does any of the committee members have a question for Planning? No? Thanks, Matt. BMZA?
This is Leva Nadeau from the BMZA. BMZA stands by its report, recommending approval with the amendments proposed by the Planning Department.
Thank you. DOT?
Hey, Matt Stegman again. DOT stands by its report, has no objections to the bill.
And they defer to the Planning Department. Law Department?
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department.
Hello.
Report, the existing conditional use was extended because the governor extended things like this during the emergency for COVID. So this is a proper bill to further extend it out past the end of that emergency. So the Law Department approves it for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. HCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report with no objection.
Okay. BDC? BDC?
Yes, Raven Thompson with BDC. We stand by our report, no objection.
Fire Department? Fire Department, Matt, you want to?
Yes, I believe that there is a report on file from the Fire Department. I am not aware of them having any objections to that.
Okay, they don't, they didn't object, but, you know, okay. Parking Authority of Baltimore City? Parking Authority?
I don't think, I don't think Parking Authority made any comments for this particular bill.
Okay, thank you. That ends the agency reports. We will now go on to public testimony. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reminder for everyone joining us from the public by computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to testify. I see Caroline Hecker has her hand raised. Caroline, do you have a comment?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of Roland Park Place. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Clark for her support of what I hope will be the final extension we need for this parking lot use. It's been in place for the last several years to ease with the parking crunch during construction at Roland Park Place. Construction is underway, and we expect to be completed prior to the expiration in 2022 of this particular extension. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no other hands raised, but several callers. So I'll go through the callers one by one again. First caller, you should have just heard two beeps to indicate you're unmuted. Please go ahead. No response. Second caller? No response. Third caller? No response. And I think our final caller? No response. Mr. Chair, I think that is all of the public testimony.
Thank you, Matt. Since that's the end of public testimony, as stated by Planning Staff, the Planning Commission recommended amendments. Is there a motion to move the amendments?
So moved by Middleton.
So moved by Councilwoman.
Second.
Second by.
Oh, thanks. I'll take Stokes.
Stokes? Okay.
Thanks.
All those who favor the amendment, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is passed. At this time, I agree, a motion to move the bill is amended.
Second.
Who moved it?
I did, Clark.
Clark moved. Who's second? Your motion's second.
Second, Middleton.
Thank you.
By Middleton. Vote on the bill is amended. Reisinger votes yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark, yes. Costello?
Costello, yes.
Costello, yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
She's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's yes. Stokes? Councilman Robert Stokes? Are you unmuted? I'll go back a third time. Councilman Robert Stokes? Do you vote? We... Yes, by Robert Stokes. Okay, thank you. So that's eight yes. The bill will come out on second reader on July 6th. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0487. Thank you. We are now going to City Council Bill 20-0497. This is zoning conditional use parking lot, a portion of the property known as 201 Reboard Avenue. The purpose of permitting, subject to conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on a portion of the property known as 201 Reboard Avenue, block 7612, lot 001A, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, and providing for a special effective date. The public notice requirements have been met. At this time, this is administrative bill, and I recognize whoever's going to represent the Department of Recreation and Parks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Adam Borman, Chief of Capitol Development with Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Moore for challenging us to consider this Reboard Park site for the Rec Center. As you will see in my presentation, it was a very good decision. I'd also like to thank my team, William Larissa Torres and Lance Decker, along with our consultants. our consultants for their hard work, and Jenny Morgan for getting us here today. Uh, with that, I'll kind of run you through the project.
Go ahead. Adam?
Mr. Chair, it looks like you may have an internet connection issue. Give a moment for it to catch up.
Okay.
Bad time.
There he is. Adam, you good?
Yeah, I'm having some trouble, but I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, he's starting to see you to come. Dante?
Okay, so here we are at Rebert Park at the corner of Potte and Rebert Avenue. If you're familiar with the Cherry Hill Splash Pool that is in the front of your screen here, uh, what we're showing you is a grand vision for revitalizing this park as a whole. Uh, but today we're really here to talk about the first phase, which is the Rec Center and accommodating parking. Uh, as you come along Rebert Avenue side here, you'll see the entrance that has a strong connection into the Cherry Hill neighborhood, the opportunity for farmers markets and concerts and gatherings at the front entrance here, uh, as we sweep around. In a later phase, you'll see here are a dog park and multiple basketball courts on the edge of the site to allow for easy use of our nearby neighbors. Um, and then in the next part, you'll see as we fly around the back, uh, the real opportunity here, which is sprawling athletic fields, um, as many as three grass fields and a synthetic turf athletic field in the distance, uh, that we intend to build in collaboration with Calvary Container Foundation and South Baltimore Gateway Partnership. Uh, this is a unique opportunity for us to have a number of fields in one place and be able to have tournaments and such events as Charm City Games. Heading into the front of the building here, you'll get to see how really amazing this facility is. It'll be the largest project to come out of our agency and really bring us into the 21st century in terms of rec centers and, um, you know, the amenities we can provide. At left, you saw a glimpse of the auditorium. Coming through here, you'll see a glimpse into the gymnasium, a number of fitness studios to the right, and an open air fitness area in the middle for weight training and cardio. As we swing around a little bit here, you'll see a neat feature, this running ramp that will get you up to a second level track that, uh, was heavily desired upon by the community in our numerous meetings with them. Um, and what's special about this track is that it kind of pokes in and out of all the different spaces and really gives you a glimpse into everything that the building offers. Uh, if you've never been on one of these tracks before, they generally go in circles around the basketball court, uh, and kind of leaving you wanting for more to look at. Um, so this one's special in that it provides interior views as well as exterior views to the grander park at large. Can you see the next page now with the letter?
No, now see, it's blank.
Okay. Okay, thank you for sticking with me.
Definitely go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, so I want to continue by sharing, uh, letters of support that we've received, um, from a number of organizations. Again, we've met with the community, uh, three different times. We met with the Cherry Hill Community Coalition itself on a number of previous meetings. We have lots of support from Cherry Hill, uh, the 46th District, Cherry Hill Eagles Football, the Greater Bay Book Alliance, uh, Mr. Alvin Lee, um, who's a member of SB7 and a number of these organizations, uh, Ms. Brad Rogers from South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, and then Michael Milton from SB7. Uh, so I'll end by showing, uh, Site Master Plan, what shows the opportunities of this site and really the specialness of it. Um, and again, today we're here to talk about the parking lot. We're proposing 103 parking spaces, uh, which is significantly less than the 627 required by code. Um, I think it's easy to imagine on a summer day where you have people at the pool, the Rec Center, uh, four games going on, people using the playground and walking trails, you know, I can easily see over 700 participants and users of our park. Uh, so with that said, uh, we hope for your support in approving this project.
Okay, Adam, before, before I, uh, ask for any questions from the committee, I, I just want to say that, uh, this is being, it's built in my district in Cherry Hill. It's been a long project, um, with Recs and Parks and the community. There has been some great communication with Recs and Parks, uh, over the number of years about this project. Um, this isn't just a, a normal rec center. It's a state of the art. Reminds me of the YMCA. Um, I know, Adam, you, uh, stated the support, but I just want to, uh, state that it's the Cherry Hill, Cherry Hill Development Corporation, businesses, uh, the residents have come to these meetings, uh, Cherry Hill Eagles with Rahim and his group, Safe Streets, uh, also faith-based, there was a number of meetings going step by step by this, because they had a lot of support, um, which is based, I think, was unanimous. I never heard anyone say they were against it. Uh, they were concerned about the parking and the reason for that, I want to touch on that, is that right where the pool is, if you're familiar with the area, there's a swimming pool when that opens up in the summer, across the street when Rebert is, uh, row houses, residents that live there, and I'm always getting phone calls about parking. So when you have a, when you have a development like this with the state of the art and all these amenities, and it's not just going to be Cherry Hill, you've got Westport, Lakeland, like Brooklyn, uh, South Baltimore, Curtis Bay, we need the parking, we need the parking. So that's about all I have to say. I support this at 100%. I hope I explained to my colleagues, uh, regards to the issue. And at this time, does any of the committee members have a question?
Mr. Chair?
Adam?
Costello?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in your words, I just want to piggyback off of what you said, um, having been involved in this process since its inception, uh, as a board member of the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership. This, this plan was, um, was originally envisioned by, among others, Lisa Millsfaw, who's the, uh, former President and CEO of Parks and People Foundation. Lisa came to us, while she is from Baltimore, previously came to us from Pittsburgh and was the lead on a revitalization of 13 miles of waterfront parks in Pittsburgh, uh, which I, I think Adam will, will attest to for parks throughout the country, uh, is simply put a world-class, uh, park destination. Uh, and that's essentially what we're trying to create here on our waterfront, uh, Baltimore. And want to point that this is not, you know, this should not be viewed as a Gold Coast project. Uh, this is bringing incredible revitalization to communities that have been asking for it for a very long time. Um, Mr. Chair, you pointed, like Middleton and all his work in Cherry Hill, I've heard one person in the dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings that I've been engaged in on this issue, and, Mr. Chairman, you've been engaged in several of those as well, I haven't heard one person who's had an ounce of opposition, uh, to this plan. So I can't tell you how incredibly excited I am for this. I know that, uh, the 46th District delegation, Senate President Bill Ferguson, delegates Lou Clippinger, delegate, uh, Brooke Lierman and delegate Robin Lewis are 100% behind this project, uh, and we're just, we're really excited to be a part of this and what this means for, for those communities surrounding it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other comments or questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Adam, what portion of the total expenditure of this project does this parking lot account for?
Uh, so the, yeah, we received a bid at just over 23 million, uh, as just to be awarded of that group, you estimate the parking lot section to be about 900,000.
Okay, um, yeah, I appreciate you having that information for me. Um, the question came up during the Planning Commission hearing, um, and reading a written response to the question that you gave in advance of that Planning Commission hearing, uh, I think the response at that time was a million dollars. Um, and again, that was a response that you gave to, uh, Martin French, uh, in response to questions that were submitted in advance of the Planning Commission hearing. Um, we later had a meeting about that, uh, and I raised the question and you said you didn't know at that time, even though you had given that figure to the Planning Commission. And then I wrote an email to follow up about that when I confirmed that you had given that information to the Planning Commission and you didn't reply to me. And so I just wanted to, to note, um, that, uh, it is, uh, about a million dollars that we're talking about, 900,000, a million dollars that we're talking about going to this parking lot. Um, and, um, you know, you, we had that meeting because I think it, I've made clear, uh, my principled opposition to, uh, building parking lots in general, but also, um, specifically in open space zone districts like this. Um, I also want to just make clear that I think it's a really bad practice for the Department of Rec and Parks to be engaging in planning for, uh, large parking lots like this, um, without there being any form of transportation study associated with it. Um, there was no professional expertise went to the idea of how this is going to impact transportation in or out of the area. Um, there was no study as to whether or not Potte Street could be converted, uh, to have, uh, some on-street parking in order to accommodate the perceived need for parking, um, even though that is essentially a highway running through this community. Um, and I just think that it's really, um, uh, not a good look for the city to be building parking lots in parks, period, and especially when there's already, uh, other space that could be used, um, for ample on-street parking. Um, and just, so I just want to put that on the record that I hope that, um, this is the last time that the Department of Rec and Parks engages in planning such a facility without, um, without procuring a real transportation study. Um, a million dollars or 900,000 dollars could help a whole lot of other people have better access to this area who can't afford to own cars. And the Department of Transit, uh, of Rec and Parks has actually conducted studies, um, none of which have indicated that car access is, um, the, you know, a, a high priority for, um, for, for users of Rec and Parks facilities. So thank you.
Okay, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Recs and Parks?
Yeah, there, there is a bus route that goes to this, uh, facility as well, is that correct?
Who is this? Who's speaking, Catherine?
Middleton, yes.
Go ahead.
There is a very active bus route that comes, goes to this facility, is that correct?
Yes, it is, Councilwoman. There's a, there's a bus route there, um, and, and just to piggyback on what you're saying about the bus route, um, during this long process, uh, residents of, uh, Cherry Hill and other community, uh, community, uh, have stated that they support this. You heard Councilman Costello. Um, so regards to, yes, DOT, there was no traffic impact study because of being a parking lot. And also, I understand, I mean, Councilman Dorsey has the right to his opinion, um, and I understand where he's coming from regards to open space and parking. I have Brooklyn that has 80 acres of open space. I support Dorsey, Councilman Dorsey, regards to taking open space and using it for parking lots, but it's not one glove fits all. This project is different and we, we vetted it throughout the community for a number of years. Just as Councilman Costello stated, the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, which is a large number of communities on the peninsula, supported this. They also, uh, allocated appropriated a million dollars toward this project. Uh, uh, so I understand what you're saying, Councilman Dorsey, but I, I strongly believe that it, I and the people that live in that area support this, um, to be this development to, you know, and so again, you're, you're welcome to your opinion, but I don't agree with what you're saying. Thank you. Councilwoman Middleton?
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Yeah, I'm not trying to engage in a debate here with you or anybody else. I think I'm just trying to make clear my point that I believe that it's irresponsible for the Department of Recreation and Parks to engage in things like this with big parking lots that absolutely have impacts on traffic, that, um, that will induce demand for driving to an area. Um, it's irresponsible to engage in these kind of transportation projects without having any formal study associated with it. And that has nothing to do with, um, you know, the, the engagement that happened with community, and this is not something I'm, you know, seeking to debate with any of the members of the committee or anything. I just am, I'm making my, my, my point clear to Rec and Parks that I think that, that it's, that it's, um, that it's not responsible to engage in projects like this without a formal transportation study. Uh, I will note, I will note, as somebody who does not drive as their primary mode of transportation, um, and having, uh, ridden my bike to this exact location twice in the last month, um, it's a terrifying, terrifying place to be able to get in and out of if you don't own a car, if you're on foot, if you're on bike, because the only way in is on Potte Street and Hanover Street, having to cross Hanover Street Bridge unless you want to go all the way around to the incinerator on the, on the Middle British Trail. And that million dollars could, or some part of it, could be going to creating safe cycling facilities, um, and creating a much safer access way along the adjacent streets here that are absolutely life-threateningly dangerous for anybody who doesn't use a car to cross them. Thank you.
Your opinion and your comment, it's still noted. Uh, thank you. Any other of my committee members? Councilwoman Clark, wave your hand.
All that, all that aside, I would just like to say, this is beautiful and I wish I had one in my district. And I'm glad a whole bunch of people have one in theirs, and there are many districts. And I, I want to thank Rec and Parks and Mr. Borman and all his crowd, because I know how hard they work on things, and it looks like this one, you were able to throw in, put in what everybody wants, even that track. And it's just a joy to see, and it's nice to see it be this instead of a bunch of expensive high rises. Amen.
Amen, Councilwoman.
All right, if you decide you don't like it, send it my way. All right, if you decide you don't like it, send it my way.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that I concur with Councilwoman Clark. I have relatives that are from Cherry Hill, and as a child, went to that area lots of times to visit my family members. And to have this, this is like a culminating event, it's really just bringing everyone together from that whole stretch of property and communities. So I totally agree and think that this is really a beginning to, you know, in bringing people together, and that's the number one thing that we should be thinking of, especially what's going on around the country now. So it's just, it's, it's a wonderful beginning. So thank you, Rec and Parks, for doing this.
Other committee members? No? Okay, I just want to, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, just real quick, I think I was a little flustered with the start of this thing, but this is viewed as a regional project for us. We're working with the Greenway Trail Network, Rails of Trails. Of course, we're closely involved in the Middle Branch Master Plan and looking at ways to get people to this location through all means of transportation. Later today, I'm actually meeting in the field with DOT and Planning to look at how we improve intersections, crosswalks, and specifically connecting this to the 21st Century School. I just want to make it clear that we are all on board with bikes. We want to get people here by any means.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. I just want to add, and I'll end with it, is there's always seemed to be a problem with communication with Recs and Parks in the past, but I can say on this project, I can't tell you how many phone calls I've had from Jenny Morgan asking questions regards to this project. So if no other committee members have any questions or comments, we're ready to go. Yes, someone? Councilman Stokes?
Yeah, I just, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Rec and Parks, Mr. Moore and his staff for thinking outside the box and doing, doing different things and throughout the city and dealing with Rec and Parks. And like my council colleagues said, Murray, we can always bring it over to Madison. We have all that green space and we're going to tear the school down. So if they don't want it, Councilor Wright saying it, you can bring it over to Biddle and Curlin Street. Thank you.
We want it, Councilman Stokes, it's not going nowhere. At this time, we are starting with the Planning Department, agency reports. Planning?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Again, this is Matt DeSantis with the Department of Planning. This bill was heard by the Planning Commission on the sixth hearing. Planning Commission recommended favorably for the bill. As Councilman Dorsey noted, Martin French represented staff, but I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions to the planning staff? BMGA?
Leaving a do for the BMGA. The BMGA stands by its report recommending approval of this project.
Thank you. DOT? DOT?
Yeah, again, Matt Segman submitting for Liam. DOT, they defer to planning.
Thank you. Law Department?
The Law Department stands by its report as well and would approve the bill for formal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. HCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report, no objection.
Thank you. BDC? BDC? BDC, Matt? No ones from BDC?
Yeah, they may have left, but I know BDC did send in a report and I stand by that report.
Okay, no objection. Okay, Recs and Parks is favorable, they already spoke. Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Parking Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to start with public testimony. Matt, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
As a reminder for anyone joining on computer from the public, please use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to testify. There are no hands raised at the moment, so I'm going to start going through callers. Again, callers, you'll hear two beeps when you're unmuted, and please either say that you do not wish to testify or begin your testimony when you hear that. Unmuting the first caller now. And no response. Second caller, you're unmuted now.
I think that was my beep. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Middleton, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have submitted in a letter of support on behalf of Cherry Hill Community Coalition. I'm also Executive Director for the Cherry Hill Development Corporation and Chairman of the Board of Directors for SB7. We'd like to reiterate our position and express in the letter that we strongly support of this measure. We'd like to thank Recreation and Parks for the great job that they've done in relationship to an authentic community engagement process. We'd also like to express that not only is this a great addition to Cherry Hill, long waited for, but it's also part of the beginning process of a multimillion dollar base in dealing with the redevelopment of Middle Branch itself. I'd just like to express to Councilman Dorsey that a number of the concerns that he has expressed, it being, I believe, with drastic relationship to a number of other activities around the incorporation of this project with Middle Branch. I urge with all of my heart and soul for the committee to pass the measure before it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Matt.
All right. Next caller, you should have just heard two beeps, you were unmuted.
This is Derek Moore to Councilor Zinger and the council members. Thank you for your support on this project. Hopefully, you all will support the parking lot. As Middleton and everyone else has said, what this facility would do is just elevate our ability to offer many different opportunities to multiple communities in that Allen State as a regional park. So again, thank you all for taking the time today to listen to our presentation and apologize I can't get on well because I have medical difficulties.
Good, thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unmuting the last caller now. Caller, if you have any testimony? Mr. Chair, that is all of the public testimony.
Okay, thank you. To the committee, there is, there's a finding of facts. Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
Motion to move the finding of facts, Middleton?
Second. Second.
Okay, who said, who's second?
I think it was Eric.
Costello, second? Others favor the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, finding of facts is passed. There's no amendments to this bill. So at this time, I ask for a motion to move the bill favorable.
So moved.
Was that Costello?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And who's second? That Middleton?
Stokes can have it.
Stokes? Okay, so Costello moved, Stokes second. We're voting the bill favorable. I think it votes yes. Snead?
Yes.
Snead is yes. Clark? Clark?
Clark, oh, me? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, of course, yes. Sorry, I thought you were saying something else.
Costello?
Yes.
Costello, yes. Dorsey?
Mr. Chair, clearly, I'm really thankful that the Department of Rec and Parks and City is investing in this really wonderful recreational facility for Cherry Hill, in Cherry Hill, and glad to see that there's going to be this, you know, big destinational place. I think that's really great, and I'm really happy about that, as this bill is really about not the facility itself in any way, but simply a big parking lot. I'm voting no against the parking lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
F.
Pinkett is yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. We have, we have seven yes with one no. This bill passes in affirmative, and this bill will come out July 6th for second reader. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0497. I want to thank the committee for being here. It was a long three hearings, so everybody have a good day. Bye. This is it.
Bye.
Bye.